Call to order. Call to order, the Board of Education regular meeting for Monday, April 10th. Please call the roll.
Mr. Dahl.
Here.
Mrs. Durnbaugh.
Here.
Megan Sparks.
Here.
Dr. Rohr.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
States of America, and a true republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion for approval of the agenda as presented.
Is that moved?
Second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yeah.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Next, we decided this year we're going to have a little report from all the buildings so people get to see and experience what goes on at these buildings, so we'll start with the elementary principals' reports.
I guess I'll start.
All these people came just to hear you guys.
Yeah, I bet. I bet. Well, hello, everybody and everybody out there. Erin and Andrew and I are very happy to be here to just share a little glimpse into our elementary world. We are three of six principals at the 2-5 level. I think we see some familiar faces out there. I see some really great ones over there from Klein, but I know the other elementaries are represented as well tonight probably too. So, we're just going to go through and kind of, if you want to skip to the next one there. Last month, our counterparts shared a little bit into the core principles, which comes from the district strategic plan. So, tonight, we're going to highlight three more of those core principles and really talk about how they apply at the 2-5 level. And we will try to be clear and brief because there are a lot of people to be recognized tonight, which I think is pretty exciting and really plays into these core principles anyway. So, I'm going to let Erin start from Driscoll, so go ahead.
Alrighty, so our primary and elementary buildings have embraced the framework of MTSS, which is called the Multi-Tierred Systems of Support. And the goal of MTSS is to ensure that every student has access to the interventions, resources, and supports they need to succeed academically, socially, behaviorally, and emotionally. And in fact, our catchphrase when we were developing our MTSS process is "All Means All," which is one of our first core principles. So, we traditionally think of the MTSS framework as the triangle. So, it's a framework to provide targeted and effective support to students who need additional help. It is designed to be a flexible and responsive system that meets the unique needs of each student. It helps ensure that no student falls through the cracks and that every student has access to the support they need to succeed. In the simplest of terms, support can be categorized into three tiers. So, support for all students, tier one, support for some students, tier two, and support for a few students, which would be tier three. Like I said, while MTSS is traditionally thought of as a triangle model, our consultants that we've been working with introduced us to another way. We kind of joke about, "It's all about the ice cream and the sundae." So, our tier one for all students starts with a strong base, and that is our ice cream. Then, we continue to layer on supports. That's going to be in addition to what everyone is receiving, not in replacement of that ice cream base, with more individualization as student needs increase or intensify. So, Katie is now going to talk about the multitude of supports that we have that are part of our process.
Yeah, break. Alright, so again, I am the principal at Klein Elementary. We have just about 450 kids, 60 staff. And really, what we're looking at right now, what I'm going to highlight, is all the support that we provide. So, when you think about elementary, you really think about early learners, right? And falling in love with learning, having confidence to learn. And in order to do that, it's not just academic support that's needed. Sometimes you need some social-emotional support, too. And so, we have all kinds of support, starting with our school counselors. And that's a familiar job. That's something that's been around a long time, and in our elementaries, we have one at every building. Certainly, sometimes that role shifts and changes, but they have lots of resources. They bring in some of those I listed up here. For example, connection with Dayton Children's Youth and Family Resource Connection, which can provide some, all kinds of things. Medical connections, really just helping families find what they need to make sure their kids are healthy and ready to go. In addition, we have, they connect, and the principals as well, especially this year, with the Montgomery County ESC, the Schools of Excellence in Prevention, which provides a multitude of support. And it really starts with the early learners to look for ways to prevent all kinds of things that can happen as kids get older, whether that's, you know, struggles with mental health, whether those are addictions, all kinds of things that can happen. And so, they set up things for families, they set up things for principals like us, for PD, for professional development, for staff, and really, it's just a multitude of support. And that is offered all free, which is wonderful. And then, we also, these are all external, I would say, categories. Our partnership with South Community, and that's something that our district is really across the schools, but for example, like at Klein, our counselor, she comes in a few times a week and meets with kids weekly who maybe need some of that additional, you know, clinical kind of counseling. Internally, we've got our core social-emotional learning teams. These are staff members who really are directing and leading the building and providing a safe and positive climate. So, I'm sure the last weeks or months group talked about purposeful people. They help implement that this year, and they really, each building has some different things. Like at Klein, we've got our Cougar Huddle, our House Huddles, things of that nature that I think our kids would be able to explain what those are and how they focus on that word of the month. This month is courage. And so, we're looking at how that kind of plays into really our culture at Klein. I'm talking too long. The next one is our academic support. So, once we have that groundwork done, we're ready to move on to learning, right? And how we can be our best learner. And early intervention is critical. And so, looking at literacy support, how we're helping our kids be able to read and understand what they read is essential. So, we have lit support teachers at all of the elementaries. Klein is the lucky recipient of a math support teacher as well. And it has been integral, and really, starting with those second graders and continuing that support that they had at Primary Village South, and they have that at North as well. And really targeting intervention and giving that targeted intervention at an early time so that that gap can be bridged quicker. MTSS coaches are a part of that support, and I can't tell you, I scream it from wherever I can, just the amount of support our MTSS coach at Klein gives. And again, this is not something at every building, and I'm just going to say, I think it'd be wonderful at every building, but it has been tremendous at Klein, just the support, the ability to help teachers plan, to look at data in a way that makes sense. Because overall, we want our kids to learn and grow where they are and to figure out how to help them grow. And we can't do that without all of these different pieces. It just, it makes it so much smoother and then really provide support for both teachers and students. So, on here as well, we've got the Core Teaching and Learning Team and the Core Plus Teams. If you think of Erin's triangle that she shared before, these are those next layers. So, the Core Teaching and Learning is down with that tier one, but Core Plus really focuses on that tier two and three. So, really looking at what kind of interventions, what do we need to help our early learners be successful as they move on? And I just want to thank you all for your support of our initiatives because sometimes in the elementary world, you know, it's a different place. There's lots of different schools and lots of things, and our building makeups are different. But I think we're all trying to really help all of our kids be the best they can be and move on and be as successful as they can be. And I'll leave it now to Mr. Bokey.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Andrew Bokey, principal at Weller. I'm on the south end of town. We have over 500 students. Says 535, not quite sure if that number's accurate today or not. So, we have a large building with a lot of wonderful people, and it's a great place to be. So, for the section that I'm going to talk about, it's really about data and feedback. You know, Katie and Erin talked a lot about how we support kids, whether that's social, emotionally, or academically. And for this section, I'm really going to talk about how do we know that that's working? How do we know that what we're doing is working? So, what we have is we have lots of evidence-based data and feedback that we use to help guide our instruction. And this is one of our core principles from our strategic plan. And up there, you can see listed, we do MAP three times a year. We have Dreambox and AVMR, which is Math Recovery, which is a newer assessment we've been using, which has been really wonderful for our struggling math learners. Orton Gillingham and Running Records, which make up some of our literacy assessments. We have the BESI Form, which is a newer form we use for our social-emotional learning. The COGAT, which is taken in second and fifth grade, and the Ohio State Tests, which we're kind of in right now, just beginning. So, those are the more formalized required tests. So, I know that some of these tests can have bad connotations, and you know, people like to complain about them, but for us, we really want to make sure that we're using this data to our advantage. And the data we collect throughout the year from all of these assessments really drives what we do on a daily basis. From formal to required assessments that we've talked about, to observations and conversations with students, we use all of that data to kind of put the puzzle pieces together to inform our instruction. The list is just an example of some of the measures we use to collect data from students. And like I said, some are given regularly throughout the year and some are given as needed. As educators, it's our goal to try and gather as much information as possible on our students so we can most appropriately plan for their success. So, in summary, I think we're just really grateful and thankful we were able to share with you all, with our counterparts from last month, and then our PV friends from the month prior, really just about what the strategic plan states, the core principles listed, really making sure that those are put into action on a daily basis and really trying to make them come to life. So, we really thank you all for listening tonight and looking forward to our DI friends getting recognized later. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As I mentioned earlier, it's exciting tonight to go recognize our DI team. So, I'm going to ask our DI coach, Mr. Oxreider, please come forward. He's going to take some time to recognize all of our students here tonight and the teams that they're a part of. So, again, welcome and looking forward to the opportunity to recognize our students this evening.
Thanks. So, first, I just want to talk a little bit about logistics. So, if you look around the room, we've got our teams lined up in order. We're going to have them come around and stand back by the backdrop here to get a picture. So, I just want to make sure everybody knows where they're headed as they come back around through the podium. You get very good? Okay. So, having said that, my name's Harry Oxreider, and along with my wife, Michelle, we are the district coordinators for Destination Imagination. This year marks the 40th anniversary of Creative Problem Solving Program in the Centerville Schools, and that's due to the exceptional support given by the community and the Centerville City School District. On behalf of all Centerville DI, we'd like to thank Mr. Wesny, Dr. Rohr, and the school board, Michelle Antrim, Sarah Swan, and the rest of the central office, as well as the building principals and volunteer building coordinators for the marvelous support the program receives. So, thank you all for supporting us. So, this year, Centerville DI grew to 34 teams from every grade and every school throughout the district. DI is founded on the concept of student-led solutions with an emphasis on teamwork and creative results, qualities that 21st century employers value. From our non-competitive early learners and special stars to the competitive teams that chose a specific steam-based challenge, these students work diligently from September through March. Each of these teams are guided by a volunteer team manager who dedicates an extreme amount of time to helping the kids grow, experiment, and learn countless new things. Without these volunteers, the students would not be here tonight, so please take a moment to recognize all of our team managers that have volunteered. So, earlier this month, the Centerville DI group traveled to Barberton, Ohio to compete in the state tournament. Tonight, the Board of Education is recognizing the 14 teams that qualified to present their challenge solutions at the Ohio tournament. Eight of the teams placed in the top three, and four teams won special awards. Out of the eight teams earning an invitation to the global finals in Kansas City, six of the teams accepted their invitation to the tournament. I'm going to announce the teams by team manager and team members, and I appreciate holding your applause until we get the whole team up here to get their picture. So, I'm going to start with our special stars. The Centerville DI program is unique with our history of inclusion. Eight years ago, Megan Sparks, with the endorsement of Jeff Schreuer, started a team comprised solely of special needs students. In June 2022, Centerville DI presented information on our Centerville City School Special Stars program at the Ignite 2022 Educational Conference. And as a result, other states have created programs based on our model. Tonight, Centerville DI, along with the Board of Education, are proud to recognize the team members from the special peeps. These students did a Spread the Love service project at Stingley Elementary under the guidance of team managers Megan and John Sparks. So, I'd like to announce, and you guys can come on up, Ezekiel Ballow, Devon Beal, Arthur Maul, Noak Min Tao Nguyen, Patrick O'Brien, and Zach Sparks. Thanks, guys. So, out of all the different challenges that you can pick, one of my favorites is service learning. In service learning, teams have to conduct a service project that answers a need in the community. Then, they present a story involving a high-stakes situation that utilized a slow-motion scene. So, from Klein, we have the totally original team name, team managers Julie and Mike Grunenwald, and they are competing in May at global finals. We have Parker Ballow, Charlie Grunenwald, David Grunenwald, Logan Johnson, Andrew Roseberry, and Benjamin Schwartz. Come on over. Our engineering teams this year had to construct a working roller coaster, and I'll tell you, that was a popular challenge this year. Building a working roller coaster was on everybody's list of something to do with DI this year. They could only use prescribed materials and were judged on the speed and distance a golf ball traveled on their roller coaster. So, first, we want to recognize the tie-dye pugs from John Hole, team manager Kiran Chowdhury. With Alia Chowdhury, Kane Miller, Adriana Roberts, Hank Ryan, Arden Walga, and Carter Wilson. Next up, we have Team Conductors of Chaos, from John Hole, with team manager Jim Moore. We have Wel Isaa, Arav Kumbala, Isaac Lindner, Jacob Moore, Ardash Paur, and Artav Shukla.
Every meeting.
Conductors of Chaos. You can see it right there.
Our name is very fitting.
Yes, yes. Okay, next up, I have Team The Peaking Parrots, from John Hole, team manager Jem Weasel, and they will be competing at globals in May. I have Aginja Akkanini, I have Aradya Akkanini, I have Sanchit Daz, Dylan Klos, and Camille Weasel. Okay, we're still with the roller coaster group. This is Team Brainstorm, team managers Sarah Pence and Santos Moray. This team of students from Weller earned a Renaissance Award for their unique roller coaster design, which ended in a fire-breathing dragon. I have JD Jonadala, Sidant Moray, Brayden Pence, and Vishnavi Vila. Now, as we move to the middle level, I have Team We Can't Think of a Name. It's a combination of the middle schools with team managers Andy Chupuk and Ron Hanson. I have Oliver Amrin, William Chamberlain, Andrew Chupuk, and Ricky Hanson. In the scientific challenge, teams had to create a tall tale that has a character with a hyperbolic trait that is exemplified by technical methods using the presentation. Here from Normandy, we have the Golden Dragons, team manager Megan Burt, and this team qualified for global finals. It's Jonathan Burt, Henry Debavec, Glenn Foster, Jagdish Shankar Gunasen, Sashe Ghul, Ojulva Kandopali, Rapida Ranganpalli. Our technical teams had to create a multi-piece puzzle that is assembled during the presentation using two technical devices. This is a middle school team, the 100% Law Abiding Perpetrators, team managers Barb and Ken Prahl. It's Abigail Cabin, Christopher Garcia, Shyla Parhar, Justin Prahl, Grant Stoltz, Darmindra Varma, and Scarlett Wyman. Next up on the technical team, we have hashtag no filter. This is the CHS team, managers Deb Nelson and Dee Gordon, and this team will be competing in the May global finals. I have Lucy Amrin, Brooklyn Asher, Owen Huckey, Jared Nelson, Soraya Turner, and Sarah Wallace Simby. In fine arts, teams had to tell a well-known tale focusing on a new character, utilizing a literary device and a focus shift, and were required to have a piece of scenery that would flip in some way. This team name is East of the Equator. It's a middle school team, team manager David Stoltz, I'm Arlena Prahl. I have Andrew Beach, James Marithy, Vivian Prahl, Deena Thranthaga, Sahashra, Sitha, Corinne Stoltz, and Aditha Varma. Next up, we have a team from CHS. The team name is The Visual Antis, team managers Michelle and Harry Oxreider. This team won one of the only two awards given at regionals for outstanding performance and technical design of their flipping backdrop, and they won another Renaissance Award at the state for risk-taking during their instant challenge. They'll compete next at global finals. Josie Astehoff, Sophia Bowali, Hibba Fatima, Pardiv Mandava, Ryan Oxreider, and Gabriel Reeker. I wear too many hats. Okay. Improvisational teams had to present a skit that involved an underdog entering a competition with input from an expert and a complication, all items that were determined on the spot by paper draws. Team We Don't Know from CHS, led by Kevin Gallagher, qualified to compete at global finals. They also earned a Spirit of DI Award at the state for instant challenge from the appraisers. So, I'd like to talk about great Gabriel Roseberry, and then, we have Caleb Gallagher and Amrita Singa. So, I need my seniors to kind of just huddle at the end down there. Thank you. Okay. Next team is The Acolytes of Gorfinger. Now, they're a scientific team from CHS, led by Morgan Lehman and Chris Kleiner. They are an all-senior team that earned a Renaissance Award at the state for their backdrop art and construction of life-size working slot machine, and will travel to Kansas City after graduation to compete at global finals and cap off their DI careers. So, I've got Ethan Hazen, Jackson Hazen, AJ Miller, Jaden Parmener, and Caleb Robbins. So, we'd also like to recognize our seniors. So, again, they've been up here once. I'd like to tell you a little bit more about them because some of these seniors have spent a lot of time doing DI over the years. So, Caleb Gallagher has been in DI for all 13 years and plans to attend Wright State for music education with hopes of becoming a band director. Amrita Sina is also in DI for 13 years and plans to attend Case Western with a major in international relations before attending law school. Ethan Hazen has participated in DI for seven years and plans to attend OSU majoring in English. Jackson Hazen has been DI for eight years and plans to attend OSU for Spanish. AJ Miller is new to DI and will attend UC for biomedical engineering. Jaden Parmener has been in DI for seven years and plans to attend UD for music composition and music technology. And Caleb Robbins has been in DI for four years and will attend UD for civil engineering. So, I'd like to recognize our seniors for all their contributions. Okay, so I appreciate your time and patience. We have a few more items this evening. So, Centerville DI is known globally for our strong and highly performing program, and especially for how our alumni continue returning and give back to DI. DI alumni are known to be hashtag tied to DI, and Ohio has the largest registered DI alumni group, many from Centerville. However, it recently came to our attention that one of our alumni never received her red tie. Megan Sparks, please step forward. So, on behalf of Ohio Destination Imagination, we'd like to present you your red tie, and we know you're already tied to DI with all the teams that you've been sponsoring. Thank you. In addition, we'd also like to recognize Barb Prahl, who was recognized at our state tournament on April 1st. There was a group that was awarded the first-ever Ruby Award for making significant contributions to the program over the past four decades. Barb helped to introduce creativity programs in Centerville, has been a team manager for 30, at least 38 teams. Formed our parent support group, was a district coordinator for many years, and this year, her team is the Lucky 13 that has qualified to compete for global finals. Barb not only managed her children's teams, but she's now managing her grandchildren's teams. Is a member of the regional board and has served as an appraiser and a challenge master, and all of Centerville DI appreciates her passionate support and willingness to mentor those in the program. The Ohio governing board got it right when they recognized Barb, and we hope you'll join us in congratulating her on receipt of the Ruby Award from the state of Ohio. So, with that, that concludes our portion of the DI awards. And again, thank you for your support over the years of the program, and we're happy to continue with the program and see it grow as we continue moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to take a five-minute break to allow you guys to leave if you'd like, or you could stay for the most interesting meeting you're ever going to see. So, it's your choice. We're going to take a couple-minute break. Next portion of the meeting is public participation. Board of Education recognizes the value of school governance, a public comment on educational issues, and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The presiding officer at each board meeting at which a public participation is permitted shall administer the following rules of the board. The portion of the meeting for the participation of the public shall be limited to 30 minutes. Attendees must register or intend to participate on a signing sheet 30 minutes prior to each meeting. Individuals may not register other speakers, and no participant may speak more than once. Participants must first be recognized by the presiding officer and will be requested to preface their comments by an announcement of their name and whether the participant is a resident or non-resident, and if appropriate, their group affiliation. Each statement made by the participant shall be limited to three minutes or less. The board will listen to all speak. Generally, do not engage in discussion or dialogue. And any matters requiring follow-up will be directed to the superintendent. First speaker, Tom Ireland.
Thank you. I'm Tom Ireland. I am a resident of Montgomery County. No affiliation. I recently watched a detailed Centerville High School video presentation titled "No Place for Hate." Adults and students throughout the video repeated the mantra, "No person can be an innocent bystander when it comes to opposing hate." It gave the impression that this sentiment was culturally ingrained into the school system. I wanted to take the video at face value. However, in the context of a recent event, I believe it was made to manage perceptions rather than present the culture of Centerville High School. Not long before the video was shown, several works of art created for a Centerville High School class were posted on a school wall. They are too hate-filled and violent to display here, but I will describe them. One is of a woman with blood coming out of her eyes as she is clearly being strangled by a rosary. Another is of a disemboweled Jesus with bloody stumps of arms and legs in what is perhaps an altar. He is being consumed by a man in priestly clothing. The caption says, "Take of this and eat it." Another is an open Bible in which is sketched the all-seeing eye and the words in caps, "Nothing holy here." It is puzzling that this art, which took time to paint for a class in which there is supposed to be no place for hate, made it past its initial critical creative stages and then onto school walls to be viewed by others. It presents prejudice and exclusion rather than the diversity, equity, and inclusion repeatedly professed at a recent school board meeting. Perhaps this event serves to demonstrate the difference between equity and equality in modern parlance. Would the art have been created or displayed if it showed a woman and a hijab being strangled by Muslim prayer beads? Would it have been displayed if the disemboweled Jesus was replaced with Mohammed and the priest replaced by a mullah? I certainly hope not. This art that I have just described is anti-Christian and is perhaps specifically anti-Catholic. It is extremely volatile in our current environment and can foster divide within our community. Centerville High School, your "No Place for Hate" initiative is more important than ever. It is my impression, however, that it is clearly not a powerfully ingrained part of Centerville's school culture. Instead, I am concerned that Centerville High School's top leadership isn't setting a strong example of "No Place for Hate" at Centerville High School. If it was, then creation of this art in a classroom would not have even been considered. My hope is that "No Place for Hate" develops in a manner that is not just a politically correct phrase, but one that becomes socially ingrained within our community.
Sandra Ireland?
Hello. My name is Sandra Ireland. I'm a taxpayer and Washington Township resident. Centerville High School Art Exhibit, "Not the Student, But School Policy." What if? Art. Would these be allowed? If not, why not? Koran desecrated. Beheaded Christians on the ground, hooded assassins. Dead girls and women on the ground, victims of law. What if? Painted furries and trans in a very negative, joking manner. Children sexless and genderless crying. What if a same-sex couple kissing with a circle and a slash through it? What if paintings of aborted children, babies, dismembered arms, legs, bloody scene? What if a Torah was desecrated? I dare to say it would have been permitted because it's Judeo-Christian. Inconsistencies. Parents, student, art teacher had to be okay with it. How long was the art up? How many pieces? Four or more? No guarantee it won't happen again. And yet, now, a high school program. No hate here. Everyone is welcome. Exceptions maybe? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kai. I'm a student here at Centerville High School. I'm a student here at Centerville, and I'm here to discuss the censorship of my artwork in December at the AP Art Pop-Up Show. Knowing that emails are still coming in, and obviously something's here, I would like to address some issues for the future. My AP investigation is about my personal trauma with the Catholic Church being a part of the church all of my life. I would like to stress that all the gore and the personal trauma was symbolic. All the people in those images were me. No one else. The woman being suffocated was me. The disemboweled Christ was me. It was never an attack on any faith, nor was it intended to be one ever. That was clearly stated in my statement, which was present above the artwork. I purposefully and very meticulously used an unblessed Bible and an unblessed rosary. I'm not here to ask whether or not my artwork will be allowed to be displayed at the end-of-year art show. I don't care. I'm here to ask what the future of art here is and what the future of free speech with art is in this school. It's clear that my statement of my own grief was never properly expressed to the groups that were upset, never properly understood either. But there will always be people like me in the future. There will always be students who use artwork to express themselves in less-than-conventional ways. So how long is it going to take until a transgender student displays artwork about their experiences with transphobia, people get upset, and it is taken down? Will artwork from artists of color describing their trauma with racism be taken down as well because students and parents saw it as offensive? Or will there be an attempted conversation with them? Will you censor those students immediately as well if we take down preemptively or not artwork that might be or is said to be offensive by some without any kind of explanation to what the artwork is about? Will that be diverse? Will that be equitable or inclusive? There was no administrative attempt at having a nuanced or investigative conversation with the parents who offered complaints. Students within the school did not seem to want one. There was no pushback against a Facebook post regarding my artwork that harassed me and my teacher. And without any attempt to gather all parties involved or have a nuanced conversation based on education and understanding of differences, these emails and complaints will continue. This is a game fundamentally with no winners. Upset students and parents will lose a chance to understand different people, and I lose a chance to have my voice heard. Thank you.
Scott Deppker, Washington Township. Thank you for the opportunity. In 2010, my wife and I moved to Centerville so our kids could attend Centerville High School. Since that time, my family has benefited daily from the hard work, the hard work and caring of many teachers, coaches, and administrators. Many have passionately executed the district's mission to empower and challenge and support every learner to grow every day. Today, our society is intermoral. New world views are challenging traditional views. There used to be a wise saying that topics of sex, politics, and religion should not be discussed in polite company. Now, it seems we cannot go anywhere without having these topics imposed on us. That imposition is one-sided and increasingly hostile. To respond in defense of one's own beliefs is an invitation to open hostility and to be made a target, hardly an empowering position that enables learning. In this environment, an institution that caters to one group necessarily ostracizes the other. Imagine if a group of teachers decided to support Christian students trying to live out their faith in this hostile culture. They might put a Christian fish next to the door to show their support. This well-intentioned symbol would be a signal to Christian students, "If you believe in Jesus Christ as your savior, and if you believe marriage is between one man and one woman and is a model of Christ's love for His church, I support your right to believe. My classroom is a safe space for you." We all know that fish would not be tolerated. Yet at CHS, we've taken a very different step for another group of students. You might rationalize that the rainbow flag is different, that it is not a religious symbol. It is certainly a symbol of a movement, and one is increasingly hostile to Christians. I'm certain many of you here would rather focus on the resources and decisions that further the academics and extracurricular activities that develop our young students. I too understand it is easier to just go along and ignore what we see growing in front of me. Unfortunately, the consequences of dividing our students into competing groups is not going away. This reality played out in the halls of CHS earlier this school year. What has been veiled hostility towards Christians became open and direct thanks to CHS's decision to display and promote a student's artwork targeting the Catholic Church and the Holy Bible. Conflict and notoriety seem to be what go for virtues these days, and this student earned them in spades. But what were the leaders and administration thinking? Did this decision go toward empowering and challenging and supporting every learner to grow every day? Or does CHS's very mission have to occasionally take a backseat to some greater cause and agenda? You, sir, the superintendent, invoked the student-teacher's First Amendment rights in your response to a concerned parent, as if evangelizing this student's worldview to the CHS student body as good civics. Can we rest easy knowing CHS would remain a First Amendment champion? If the student's artwork was a rainbow flag cut to the shape of a swastika? The double standard is now screaming. The only good thing about a step from veiled to open hostility is that it demands recognition. We can no longer pretend it's not there. It chased me off my couch to here tonight. In a truly public space, one student, or worse, a teacher's right to speak on their religious beliefs does not override another student's right not to listen. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Laurlee. I know what it's like to be the different kid in high school. I know what it's like to be made fun of.
Do you mind stating your whole name and if you're a resident here?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Laurlee Hanson. I'm a resident. And I volunteer in the schools. I've loved the schools here. I feel like I am the mother of a twice-exceptional student. I volunteer with DI. I've volunteered in the schools ever since my little one was born. We have an exceptional system. I also know what it's like to be the different kid. I know it's hard. I have sympathy and empathy to a certain extent as far as being different with the student. I was made fun of because I was smart, because I was a dork, because I was different. But at the school that I went to, it was very businesslike. And the kids were appreciated by the staff and by the framework of the school system for who they were, not what they were. There were certain rules, guidelines, about what the limits of student speech were, what the limits of student behavior were. And both with the bullying and with, I was in art class, what the framework that you could speak about was because of, when you're doing art, you're representing yourself and your school, wherever that art goes. And we have to take into account the people that it might affect because art, you know, it's a picture. And a picture is worth a thousand words. Okay? I say this because I feel like the one thing that I really appreciated about this school system is that it is, I'm, as a mother of a twice-exceptional student, it has been a nurturing, warm place where my son is known by his name, not a label. He is known by his giftedness, He is known by his giftedness, not a label. Once I had, I am handicapped. One time I had someone introduce me by my handicap to someone, and I said to them privately later, I am not my handicap. You introduced me by my name and let this place be, continue to be a welcoming institution where you're not, you're have, you're still thinking of everybody, whether it's in the art you put on the walls or in how you treat all the students. All right? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Sheen.
Good evening. My name is Ann Sheen, and I live in Centerville. I have three grandchildren in the Centerville School District. I'm here to get continued support for a program I started August 8, 2019, called Acknowledging Acts of Kindness, which some of the schools are participating in. It's simply a card that you hand to someone when you witness or hear of an act of kindness. The card says, "Acts of Kindness Club Promoting a Culture of Kindness. Kindness Rocks." On the back, it says, "Thank you for positive attitude and kindness to promote a culture of kindness in your community. Please pass this card on." It has my website and my email. On August 8, when I launched this program with the help of the Dayton Daily News, I was bombarded with requests for cards. It happened to be the Thursday after the Oregon shooting, and I can't tell you how people just were craving that and the kindness that they felt our state needs. Anyway, up until March of '20, I had to distribute over 40,000 cards via businesses, doctors, schools, Primary Village North-South, Klein, John Hole, Weller, Magsick, Watts, Centerville High, Alter, CJ, Incarnation, St. Charles, Oremo, as well as cards that people heard about it in Ohio, Illinois, Michigan, Florida, Massachusetts, California, Idaho, Pennsylvania, and also an email from the actress Marlo Thomas, who read about it on Yahoo News. I also feel that if we can get this message to not only our community through the schools, I have a lot of businesses, I have Dr. Rohr's office that has some, another doctor, it can be a tool used against bullying. And I am aware right now of some bullying going on at Centerville High, despite parents' complaints to the coach and despite the students involved's complaints to the coach. I think these cards could take, if everyone works towards a kindness attitude, that takes the power away from the bully, and it's like peer pressure for a kind, a good thing rather than a bad thing. I, I have cards here with me tonight. I'd be happy to leave them. I don't know if I bring them over there.
Sure.
Okay. Well, I just have one quote, one little message to end with. Kindness costs nothing. These cards are free. I pay for them, and you can get them for me. I send them, deliver them, whatever you want. It is not a weakness to be kind, but rather it shows a strength of character and willingness to reach out. Courage is what it takes to stand up and speak. It is also what it takes to sit down and listen. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. All right. That's all the speakers tonight. Move on to Board Administrative Reports, Legislative Report. Miss Sparks.
Thank you, Dr. Rohr. The legislator is on spring recess until Monday, April 17, when the Biden budget process and committee hearings resume. We're still watching Senate Bill 1, which would rename the Department of Education as the Department of Education and Workforce Do, and would create the position of Director of Education and Workforce. The bill also wouldn't, would also reform the functions and responsibilities of the State Board of Education and the Superintendent of Public Instruction. And that's the end of the report. We're just watching bills.
Thank you. Next, financial updates.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to give you just a few things to think about tonight with my report. We're going to start first by talking a little bit about levy cycles, kind of in general, about schools in general, and then for Centerville specifically. I want to just touch on a couple of proposed legislation pieces and then give you a timeline for May, June, and July in the coming months with financial pieces that you'll be thinking about and considering. So first, I just want to make reference to, on our website, and thanks to Mrs. Swan for helping me put together a piece in the winter 2023 accent, that talked a little bit about levy cycles and what levy cycles are. It's very normal for schools across the state of Ohio to continuously go back to voters to ask for approval of new money requests. Centerville's last new money request was in November of 2019. We first collected on that in January of 2020. That was a 5.9 mil operating levy with a 1 mil permanent improvement added on to that. The disadvantage the school districts have with voted levies is there is no room for them to grow. There's no new money that comes in. When it's passed, it's set at that dollar amount, and any time valuation goes up, we don't gain the increased revenue on that, and that is due to House Bill 920 that has been in effect in Ohio ever since 1976. So again, it freezes that dollar amount. The only source of additional revenue that we can get without going back to voters to ask for new money is on new construction, which, which we are fortunate that we do have new construction and also inside millage. Since 2019, we have had one ballot issue, and that was this past May of 2022. That was to renew an emergency levy that was approved back in 2013, only to continue that levy. So no new money with that, no additional revenue for the school district. It just extended the 10-year period an additional 10 years. So I want to talk and show you the, the visual that was in the accent report. This gives kind of the cycle of our cash balances as a percentage of our budget, and then the green arrows are signifying when we were successful with passing operating levies in, in the past. So back in 2005, you can see that green arrow there, we passed a 4.4 mil levy. You can see that a couple of years after that, those yellow bars go up, so that cash balance as a percentage of revenue, or as a percentage of expenditures, it increased the next couple of years. That's what happens when levies are passed. We're able to add to our cash balance or add to our savings account, however you want to reference it. And then eventually, our expenses start to exceed our revenue, and we, we start to eat into that cash reserve that we've been building up. And, and you can see that in 2008 and in 2009. Then in 2009, a 5.9 mil levy was passed with a couple of years of modest increases in our, in our cash balance. Back in 2013, that was a 5.9 mil levy at the time. That was that emergency levy that I referenced, and that was renewed at 4.53 mils in 2022. So again, we, we had some, some gains and some increases, and it was much more distinct from 2014 through 2017. You can see those increases. And then again, expenses started to exceed the revenues, and we had to go back to the voters in 2019. If you put similar graphs of comparable school districts to us, you're going to see the exact same thing. It's very normal for districts to be on the ballot anywhere from every three to five or six years. So any questions on that? So you can see after we did pass in 2019, you can see in '21 and '22, we did increase that cash balance, but we're forecasting and projecting that we're going to start eating into that again. And so, you know, we are, we're having conversations as an administrative team to talk about timing, but we do need to come back to the voters to ask for additional revenue. I don't have a recommendation on that tonight. We'll talk more about that in May when we talk about the five-year forecast, but, but that is coming. And so there, there's one piece of legislation that, that we're waiting to see, and that's House Bill 1. We talked about that in length at the last, at the February board meeting, and that's really going to maybe change and play with the, the property tax system. So we're waiting to see what happens with that legislation, but I'm hopeful that in May we have a little more information. So some of the proposed legislation that, that I personally am keeping a close eye on is House Bill 10. And again, we talked about these in February, but just to, just to remind you, House Bill 10 is the, the Fair School Funding Plan and continued implementation of the Fair School Funding Plan. It does not help Centerville City Schools. It does not bring us additional revenue. In fact, it pushes us further and further on to the guarantee. I, I think the model is good statewide, but for us specifically, it, it's not, it's not helping us at all. It's not going to bring us additional revenue. House Bill 1, Property and Income Tax. The, as Megan mentioned, the legislature is, has been on a recess. They're, they were on recess last week and this week, so there's been no activity and no updates, but the, the rumblings that I'm hearing is that this bill likely will not go anywhere. Possibly an income tax reduction piece, which that's at the state level, not, not for the school district. We may see an income tax reduction get added into House Bill 33, which is the last one listed, and that is the state budget bill. So we're watching legislation closely and, and trying to keep our pulse on, on what's happening statewide. And then finally, just from a timeline perspective, on May 15, we'll have our work session. We will present to you a revised forecast for your comments and your consideration, not to vote on at the work session, but to look at. I'll answer questions that you might have. There won't be major changes to that, but we'll update our property tax revenue. I'll take a look at state funding and make sure that, that we're on track with that. But you'll, you'll see an updated five-year forecast on May 15, and then I'll ask for your approval on May 22 in our regular meeting. We're required by the Ohio Department of Education to submit that by May 31st. So the, the timing works, works well with that requirement. And then in June and July, we're going to be finding out more definitively what these legislative changes might mean for the district, and we may be making a recommendation for your consideration at the June and July regular board meetings for levy resolutions at that time, possibly, whether that's in November or whether it's in May. If it's a November recommendation, we'll have resolutions for you. If it's a May recommendation, then you won't see anything until next year. Any questions for me?
Laura, you talk again like we did a couple of months ago and continue that we'll talk about the changes that the state is maybe making to the tax aspects that will possibly have negative effects on school districts and property taxes. And I know they've been in recess, but they're still meeting. Some of the committees are meeting, and we're getting some reports from the OSBA about those things. So is there any more information about how they're going to supposedly decrease income tax statewide, increase property taxes for residential and agricultural property owners, decrease into property taxes for industrial and commercial property owners, all resolving in less money projected at this point in time for public schools? Has there any been any more information coming from the OSBA, Ohio School Association, relative to those three items?
Nothing official. A lot of conversation about all of those exact points that you just mentioned. The, the advocates for the districts are, are at the hearings, and again, not this week and last week, but they're there, they're testifying, they're, they're saying all of those things. They're running simulations. The simulation that I have for Centerville, as it was introduced, House Bill 1 would decrease our district revenue by about $1.4 million, and it would increase the Class 1 residents, which is, which is the homeowners, for Centerville specifically, by over $5 million. And that has nothing to do with anything that we have done as a school district. That would be just that piece of legislation. So they know, they know this. We've told them this. I say "we," just meaning our organizations, BASSA and OASBO and OSBA, have told the legislature, legislature this information. I don't see any way that it can go forward with, unless they make some significant changes, but we're in a wait-and-see game.
They certainly haven't made any changes to it so far.
That's right.
I mean, it's been introduced since February, I believe, maybe earlier than that, and I haven't seen, I mean, I'm watching very carefully the information we get, and we've been asked to send comments to our legislators or state senators. I've done that, haven't got any responses back from them, so I don't know what they're going to be doing, but whatever they're doing continues. It's not going to be good for residential property owners. It's not going to be good for public schools, including ours.
Agreed.
Yeah, I've also contacted the city council here, the trustees. They're all actively going against it, because it will affect dramatically the money that's coming into the cities and the townships, as John said, and everyone said, this, this is the worst-case scenario for residents, and it just is. And I, I'm not sure how many residents are aware of it, but it would be shocking if this thing passes and residents all of a sudden are paying more property tax. And then when school districts obviously go out and ask for more.
Right.
They're going to like, say no. I mean, it's a double whammy.
Yes.
So.
Yes, and that's a good point. It, it doesn't just affect the school districts. It's a very good point. It's the town, it's your roads and your fire and your police, and it's your parks and your library, and anybody that, and any organization that has a levy, a property tax levy out there is going to be impacted by this.
And what's unfortunate about it, the state did this some years ago when they got rid of the local government fund, because that was state money that would get back to local governments, school districts. They took that away, for some period of time, replaced it, but now that's all gone for all local governments, for the idea that they could lower income taxes by not having those money going back to local governments. This is just another copy of the same program, worded differently.
Yes, I agree.
Well, thanks for nothing.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you.
All right, next, Business Office.
Good evening again. I wanted to provide you a quick update on the, the safety grant and access control that I talked about last month. This was access control for, for all 13 buildings and about 40 door replacements as part of this process. So the bid process began last month, and bids were due on last Tuesday for four. We received two bids. One was incomplete. It was only for the access control portion, and one was about $800,000 over that projected estimate that we talked about. Working with Levin Porter right now on the difference between those bids and that project estimate, looking at ways to possibly decrease that cost. And so I have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday, and I hope be able to provide you an update of that project moving forward in May. We do have some timeframe, a time limit on those grants that we've received, but we do have plenty of time to get that project up and going and completed.
Mr. Cromwell, the, the bid that was incomplete, where did that fall in line with our projected estimates?
So.
Although it was incomplete for that consider.
It was about $800,000, $859,000 for the access control piece only. That did not control, that did not do any of the door replacement at all.
Original estimate you said?
Original estimate with, with, with door replacement as well was about $1.5 million.
Okay. Thank you.
Athletic Complex, which I've talked about a couple of times over the, the last few months, kickoff event on Wednesday for our fundraising campaign. Again, this is a project we want to do without the use of taxpayer dollars. Starts Wednesday here in the Central Theater at 7:00 PM. We'll have a short open house, along with some presentations, some short presentations, and then a question and answer session. We really kicked this off and, and put this out in social media last week. A lot of likes, a lot of positive comments out there, and so hope be able to answer some questions and kick off that fundraising activity on Wednesday of this week. Last but not least, PVN Rooftop Units is, we put out requested bids to the Equalist Group through PVN for the air handling and condensing units. Three units need to be replaced were installed in 1990. These are frequent calls to our maintenance team as well as outside vendors. We have difficulty finding replacement parts, and they use the old R22 refrigerant, which has been discontinued. The heating components of these units were replaced about four years ago. These were listed as a need on our facilities assessment. Like I said, we had two bids, Wybo Energy Systems, which does a lot of work in our district, $504,453, as well as Train Incorporated, which again, does a lot of, a lot of work in our district, $468,432. $400,000 of this will be paid for through ESER funds. The remaining balance will be covered through our PI funds, and so I'm asking you to pass a resolution here shortly for the approval of Train Incorporated as the lowest and best bid for the replacement of these three units. Questions about any of those projects?
No.
Thank you.
All right, next, Treasurer's Recommendation.
Consider approving the March 23 Financial Statements, Monthly General Fund Rolling Report, Monthly Cash Reconciliation, Monthly Fund Activity Report, Ben and Out Purchase Orders Approved by Administration, Certified by the Treasurer and Supported by Board Resolution totaling $26,327.20.
Move.
Second.
Hold the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Consider approving the minutes of the following Board of Education meetings, March 13th Work Session, March 13th Regular Meeting.
Is that moved?
Second.
Hold the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Next, Superintendent's Recommendations. Excuse me. Superintendent recommends accepting the resignations listed on Schedule A. Superintendent recommends the employment, change of employment status, or change of contract status for the certificated personnel listed on Schedule B for the salaries programs on the effective dates given. Superintendent recommends the employment or change of employment status for support staff personnel listed on Schedule C for the salaries programs on the effective dates given. Superintendent recommends the employment of the personnel listed on Schedule D for supplement, D and D1 for supplemental contracts or extrajudicial assignments. Superintendent recommends the granting of leaves of absence for the personnel listed on Schedule E for the reasons and on the dates given. Superintendent recommends the nonrenewal of the listing of nonlicensed individuals or out-of-district teachers for coaching or direct pupil activity programs who hold limited supplemental contracts as listed on Schedule F. Motion, please.
Come on.
Second.
Hold the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Superintendent recommends the nonrenewal of the listing of nonlicensed individuals or out-of-district teachers for coaching or directing pupil activity programs who hold limited supplemental contracts as listed on Schedule F1.
Is that moved?
Second.
Hold the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh.
Obstand.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Consider approving May 1 through 5/23 as National Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week, a time to publicly recognize our staff's contribution to the development of this community and the tremendous influence on the lives of our students.
Move.
Second.
Hold the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Consider approving May 1 through 5/23 as National Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week, a time to publicly recognize our staff's contribution to the development of this community and the tremendous influence on the lives of our students.
Move.
Second.
Hold the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes. To say every year a week is certainly not enough. Consider approving the award of high school diplomas for recommended students of the class of 23 who have successfully completed requirements established by the State of Ohio Department of Education and the Centerville Board of Education. to replace three rooftop air handling and condensing units through the participation in a contract with Equalist Group purchasing cooperative in the amount of $468,432.
We'll move.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes, any final comments? If not, pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 21.22G1, I hereby move the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of considering the employment of an employee of the school district. No other business will be conducted except to come out of executive session to adjourn the meeting.
We'll move.
Back it.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes. Thank you all. Have a good night.